All right, the court is back on the record and we'll move back up to item number four. Linda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. And we have Connie Beckton sitting in today for Ms. Austin. Good morning Connie.
Good morning. This is for approval for a regular session on May ninth of this year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to approve the minutes of May ninth. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. Good morning ma'am.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of eight hundred ninety-four thousand seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. These were the bills that were presented at the last Commissioners' Court.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
In our general checking account, we have one million ninety-four thousand one hundred dollars and three cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have five million eight hundred thirty-six thousand six forty-nine oh two. Our tax pool general, we have six million five hundred three thousand nine hundred forty-four and thirty-four cents for a total cash funds of thirteen million four hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
We approve the cash statement.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of quarterly report. Debbie.
Sir, this is for the fourth quarter of two thousand fifteen, would have been, uh, Jan- September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen to December thirty-first. Our ending balances in general checking, one million five hundred eighty thousand six ninety forty-six. Investment at Wells Fargo, two million eighty-two thousand eight forty-three twenty-five. Tax pool, one million seven hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred thirty-seven thirty-five for a total of five million four hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-one oh six. And in this quarter, there was a decrease of eight hundred eighty-three thousand seven twelve forty-six. Also behind it, I have you the balances of each bank account for the months of October, November, and December. And then there's a breakdown by funds. At the end of the report are the interest rates daily for tax pool for those three months.
We approve quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Debbie. Oh, you have one more item. Number eight, Debbie McWilliams, authorization to close bank account titled Emergency Family Services, account number ending in six-three-zero-zero. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again. Item number nine, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills. Good morning Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pay for expenditures and transfers for May the tenth, two thousand sixteen was eleven thousand twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. The pay for expenditures for May the seventeenth or May the twentieth were two hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And today, May the twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, the expenditures for Commissioners' Court are two hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. The total expenditures and transfers are five hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Gross payroll for May the twelfth, two thousand sixteen was four hundred sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and six cents. FICA was thirty thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Retirement was fifty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Total transfer for May the twelfth, two thousand sixteen payroll was five hundred six thousand four hundred dollars and ninety-three cents.
Move to county county.
A second. I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to pay the bills. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, Angela Gore, create new line item in the health unit budget, zero-one-zero-six-three-zero-four-zero-five for professional services and transfer twelve thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars from zero-one-zero-six-three-zero-one-o-two salaries appointed to the new professional services line item. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, Toya Akrich, Health Department, recognizing Marion Kellum for thirty-two years of dedicated service to the Harden County- to Harden County as the sanitation inspector for the Health Department and wishing her well in her retirement. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's sad and regret that Marion's gonna be retiring, but I know she's looking forward to it. She's put a lot of years, thirty-two to be exact, into the county. She's been an extremely dedicated employee. She's worked lots of overtime inspecting different restaurants on the weekends and festivals for a lot of, lot of years. It's gonna be hard to fill her shoes, so I sure appreciate all you've done, Marion, for the county. You've been great. We're gonna miss you.
And Toya, can you just tell us what other positions that she's held here? Cause she hasn't always been the health inspector, so what else has she done for the county?
She started out over here in eighty-
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, yes. Genitorial Services, correct? And then for nine years, yes. I can't, it's been too long.
And then the Health Department.
Right, after that. So been there ever since.
We're sure gonna miss you. And she's done an excellent job for the citizens of Harden County and I had to bribe her to get her to come in here today. She did not wanna do this. But she definitely deserves this recognition and I think we all should give her a hand. If we can just get a couple of pictures before we move on. Item number thirteen, Tamika Renfro, Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, adoption of resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen recognizing the month of May, two thousand sixteen, as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Harden County. Is Ms. Renfro here?
Yes.
Yes ma'am, did you wanna read the, uh, resolution?
Aye.
Or do you just want us to pass it and give you the, the original? Some, that's what you want? We had three motions, I think. I heard, I heard Roberts. Mr. Roberts moved and second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you ma'am. Item number fourteen, Judge McDaniel, exec- acceptance of resignation of Rebecca Richard from Spindletop Center Board of Trustees and appointment of Sharon Spears to fill vacancy.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, Rebecca Walton, County Attorney, request authorization for payment of one thousand dollar retainer fee for certified forensic expert to evaluate evidence for the purpose of determining its admissibility in court and permission to enter into an agreement with the expert witness if the evidence is deemed admissible.
Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for entertaining me this morning. Um, the District Attorney's Office, as well as my office, have a, uh, case we've got some exceptional evidence on. Sure this court is familiar with an incident which occurred here in Coontz on April the fifteenth. It was a home invasion and aggravated robbery where we had, uh, three adults and one juvenile enter to the residence of, uh, three gentlemen and hold them at gunpoint and, um, harm them, uh, in the process of this robbery. The entire event, um, is, uh, on recording, nine-one-one recording, so we have it from start to finish. It's not, uh, real clear, uh, but it is all there and, uh, we felt that, or at least I did for the juvenile's case, felt that, um, it was gonna be necessary to have a, um, forensic, a certified forensic expert to evaluate that evidence, um, potentially either to transcribe it for us, if that's possible, and to do voice identification, uh, for my juvenile. Um, the three adults have all confessed to the crime, the juvenile has not. So we're trying to make sure we have an airtight case. I, I think this is an exceptional case. Judge McDaniel is familiar with this, just in his role as the, um, juvenile judge on occasion. We have a real problem with this particular group of, um, I call them kids, cause they're still young adults as well as teenagers. And we would like to make sure we have the best possible case. So what we've done is we've located this expert. He is in, um, Texas. Um, he is requiring a letter from the Commissioners' Court, um, which instead of us having to pay the thousand dollars retainer, he would just take a letter from the court guaranteeing that payment. And what he will do, if you, uh, oblige me, is allow me to send the recordings and some, um, evidence to him. He'll evaluate and make sure he can even do something for us. And then if he says, yes, he can be helpful to the cases, um, we can enter into a contract at that point in time. I've given you a pretty, uh, thick curriculum vitae. I think it's over twenty pages long, as well as another sheet that came off of his, uh, website, which gave his fees, just so you guys could have an idea of what we might be looking at. And, um, I find, I think this would be exceptionally helpful to the presentation of my case.
I move we authorize payment.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Rebecca, do you, uh, foresee, I mean, this might even play out, we might not have to go through this, but do you foresee the defense requesting the same thing, to have their own forensic expert?
I have no idea. I, I, I will be working with Tim McDonough, who represents the juvenile. Um, quite honestly, I've just filed a petitioner, a petition to adjudicate him and I think I've alleged probably seven total crimes. This is not his only case. Um, I have no idea if he will be presenting that motion. I, I can tell you that so far, this young man has not been inclined to plead to anything.
Right. And I would just like to add that normally we state the case on the agenda that we're requesting any type of funds like this far, but since the juvenile, uh, the defendant is a juvenile, I didn't list the case on the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Rebecca. Item number sixteen, Lieutenant Aaron Tupper with the Sheriff's Office, discussion impossible action, request to purchase training ammunition for T. Cole required firearms qualific- qualifications. Excuse me. We have the, uh, letter here from Lieutenant Tupper that shows the amount of three thousand seven thirty-two. And is that coming out of the, uh, training line item?
Yes, sir, it'd be coming out of training.
And they do have that in their budget. So passed it.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, Deputy Richard Nelson with the Sheriff's Office, presentation of dangerous drug policy for discussion and possible approval. I don't think you'll get off his light, we're gonna have to have some.
Dangerous dogs, not dangerous drugs.
Did I say drugs?
Yep.
Dangerous dog policy.
The end of last year, I had to work a case where a lady was walking in the, uh, Beaumont Colony, exercising. She was attacked by a pit bull. She had to get a lot of stitches and, uh, tore the back of her leg, around her calf, uh, pretty good. Since then, uh, T. Close, or T. Cole, the licensing agency for all police in the state, had made it requirement for all police officers to go through training dealing with canines. I went about that case backwards in that, uh, got a warrant basically for the dog and secured it in Lumberton, in the, uh, dog pound. We had a hearing, uh, Judge Ingram agreed that it was a dangerous dog and ordered that it be euthanized. It was a pit bull. Um, it had already bit a police officer two other times. So, uh, it was euthanized, um, but I've studied on this a little bit. Um, I've studied on this a little bit and it says in the Health and Safety Code that animal control authority means municipal or county animal control office with authority over the area where the dog is kept or the county sheriff in an area with no animal control office. So it falls to us actually, isn't Sheriff's Department, to deal with them. I think in front of you have, uh, several copies and, and all of this is from the law. It's already been through County Attorney's Office. Uh, if you have a long form that says, uh, Chambers County up at the top of it, that's been the one that's, um, you may not, do you? Yeah. Okay. That one is the one the County Attorney's Office likes the best. Um, it has everything in it. Just to give you an example, the requirements by law, uh, they have to, what'll happen is if a dog attacks somebody, it can attack livestock, uh, people. Or if a person feels like that they're about to get attacked, they can make a report. As a deputy, we would go out there and take statements, sworn statements, and we can determine if the dog is dangerous or not. Once we do that, uh, we will serve that person with paperwork indicating that they are the owner of a dangerous dog. They can appeal that to a JP, which is the backwards part from the way I did it. They can call for a hearing and have, uh, uh, County Judge, JP, or municipal, which we wouldn't fool with, to have their appeal. Um, but when we declare it dangerous, this, according to law, uh, requirement for a dangerous dog and some of that paperwork, they have to register the dog annually with the Sheriff's Department and pay fifty dollars a year. Has to be restrained at all times on a leash, in the immediate control of a person, or in a, in a secure enclosure. They have to obtain proof of liability insurance policy and show financial responsibility in the amount of at least one hundred thousand dollars to cover damages resulting from an attack by a dangerous dog, uh, causing bodily injury to a person. They have to submit rabies information. If they sell the dog or give it away, they have to notify the Sheriff's Department of where the dog's new address is. Um, that person is gonna now have to register the dog. Um, so we can keep up with it. All of these, uh, if they don't comply, then thirty days after we determine that it's a dangerous dog, I can give them another warrant for the dog, go get the dog, put it in, uh, the pound. And then we can have a hearing. If it's deemed dangerous, it'll get euthanized. After, if the judge does not agree with their appeal. The only difference in law between what I've written generally, with, where it's got Harden County at the top, as opposed to Chambers County, their ordinance countywide, um, if you look under local regulations of dangerous dogs, what they've done is define securing closure as a fence not less than eight feet in height. The securing closure shall have a concrete floor, which shall have the bottom of the fence embedded within the concrete, a minimum of three inches. They'll have a suitable roof to ensure that the dog can't climb out. The su- uh, securing closure shall have a gate, which will be locked with a key type padlock. Securing closure shall have signs placed on four corners reading Dangerous Dog. And then it talks about the size of the signs. That's really the only difference. They have a more stringent, um, definition of regulation of the enclosure. Because by law, it just says you have to have an enclosure and sign it. So if there's, if they have it in their yard, it's an enclosure, it's secured. Uh, the question comes up of, well, what happens, um, if somebody's not supposed to be there? That's on the unprovoked attack, an attempt by a dog to inflict bodily injury on a person in a situation which the dog was not hit or which the dog was hit, kicked, struck by the person with an object or a part of the person's body. Nor was, uh, pulled, pinched, squeezed, any of that is in consideration. If somebody's trespassing and they go in these people's property and the dog attacks them, that's, that's not a unprovoked attack. That's what the dog probably is there to do. So it's, um, I think it's something we need in this county, cause we, it's Sheriff's Department, we have, uh, a lot of dog calls and nine times out of ten, it's basically turned into a civil deal. If somebody gets bit, well, the case that I had is civil. That lady has to sue the dog owner to get, uh, repaid for medical problems that she incurred that day. This makes the criminal part, where when we get sent there, we don't have to wait on, on a judge or anything. We can say, okay, by sworn statements, you have a dangerous dog. This is now what you have to do. We would have this form, a duplicate. You serve it to them right then. Now they have to start doing everything they're supposed to do.
And that's just based off of a complaint from a neighbor or somebody?
Mm-hmm.
But now if the dog actually bit somebody, you would do something different. You'd go ahead and take the dog into custody? Is that what you said, or?
We can, but it's probably easier to serve, just like it is, just like it has been. If it has bit them and we, uh, if this court wants to do it that way, that's fine. What we're gonna have to do is work out a kink with, uh, Lumberton. Um, dog, the animal control, cause they have a good secure facility. If we can talk to Chief Sullins and the city manager, get an agreement there, because it doesn't happen all that often. But if we needed somebody to come out, to come out and get the dog secured, all of those costs that would be incurred, overtime, callouts, that kinda stuff, is, uh, paid for by the owner. And that's in writing if, um, in, including, um, the owner shall pay any cost or fee assessed to Harden County related to the seizure, acceptance, impoundment, and destruction of the dog. So they would pay every bit of it.
Now this local, local, local regulation of dangerous dogs on the Chambers County form, that was something that was passed by Chambers County.
Correct, by the Commissioners' Court.
So in order for you to include this on your form, we would need, need to take same, the same or similar action? Set it from what the, uh, policy or the way you have it listed on the agenda?
The one that I have that says Harden County Sheriff's Office on the top is the rough one by law. That's the minimums by law. Uh, I've been in conversations with, uh, Lieutenant King over in Chambers County and he gave me a copy of theirs, which, uh, uh, may or may not cause more headache to build a, depending on how the court feels about it, to build an enclosure like they have listed.
But you said this is the one that the County Attorney liked the best out of all of the samples that we have?
I've taken her everything down there that I can find and she likes that one with everything on it. Uh, it's well spelled out real well, easy to read, and we'll make it in triplicate form if it's approved. And go from there.
Uh, Deputy Nelson, I haven't had time to read this verbatim, but I see that Chambers County does also include, I didn't see it on, on ours, but if a, uh, dangerous dog attacks livestock, domestic animals, or fowls, it's al- that's also covered.
Yes, sir.
I believe it should be covered.
Yes, sir. It's, uh, down in the bottom part, uh, where it says fail to comply with these regulations, it may lead to criminal prosecution. I was aiming primarily at humans, but, uh, after I read theirs, it, it does talk about killing, uh, any kind of livestock, chickens, domestic animals, fowl, any of that. And all that's already been put in the law. It's, it's been in the law that we could do that as a department. Um, but it's just never really been addressed up to this point.
Judge, since this is our first exposure to it and it is a policy, um, I'd like to suggest that they include the Chambers County, put it all together in a final format, and bring it back to us for, if that's agreeable.
Yes, sir, that's agreeable to me if it deals with the rest of the court, but we will need to address this, uh, pol- this, uh, local rule as a separate line item on the next agenda. Is that correct?
Whatever you think.
Well, I mean, does, does the county have ordinance-making abilities?
We can make, uh, local rules and, and, uh, pass an order and that makes it similar to a, a, uh-
Resolute, we can do resolutions.
Right. That's why I think we put that on the next agenda as a, as a separate item and then pass the policy after that.
Okay.
Basically, all this is, if I understand Richard correctly, and I'm guilty, just like he said he did. I've been out before to where I went through the JP process, but basically, all this is allowing us for us to take one extra step before the JP process and allow the deputy to make that decision. I was unaware of this statute, but I think it's a great idea. I mean, because that is a major concern. I think that lady had called my office, the one you dealt with, uh, so, uh, I agree with it.
We can handle it that quick, right there, and, and start the process if we deem it dangerous. Um, if that person doesn't wish to have an appeal process, within thirty days, we can tell them, take the dog down to Lumberton Dog Pound, they'll take it into custody and euthanize it.
At their cost.
At, at the owner's cost.
Am I correct that right now, where we stand, without adopting some type of policy like this, then this is strictly a civil matter between the parties?
Correct.
I think we need to do something where the county's involved and law enforcement can become involved.
I agree.
Do you need a motion or something to start the process, Judge, or?
I don't think so. I think we'll just ask Deputy Nelson to contact Lumberton between now and our next meeting, which is June, uh, thirteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And let's go ahead and get that, uh, worked out if we can and then present us with this, uh, final policy here and I will go ahead and put it on the agenda to pass this, this, uh, order to make that a, a local rule.
I got one more question, Richard. The, um, the Lumberton part of it is the, the animal control officer down there, he's gonna be the one, if you have to call out an officer to come out. So do, do they have to pay directly to Lumberton or would they come through us to make the payment on, on his overtime?
I, I would think that would be, uh, up to, after I talk to the chief, um, if it's his guy and, I mean, we do it however y'all want, to get him paid, cause it'll be overtime off of the city.
I think as long as the dog owner pays that, then that's all good.
That's, that's gonna happen. The dog owner's gonna pay anything incurred with overtime, call out, uh,
Euthanasation.
Detention, euthanization, boarding, all of that.
Okay.
Judge, are we gonna need to enter a local agreement with Lumberton on that specific part?
Yes, Rob.
I would think so, yeah. Thank you Deputy Nelson.
And if, uh, if anyone, couldn't Deputy Nelson or any of the Commissioners have any changes they'd like to make to this paragraph where it says local regulations? If you'll let me know, then we'll make sure that we have it correct for that agenda. Any other discussion?
A second is motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts to proceed as discussed. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, Amanda Young, Floodplain Administrator, presentation of semi-annual fiscal year two thousand sixteen progress report. Good morning Amanda.
Good morning. This is from October the first, two thousand fifteen to April the twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. We have issued five hundred and fourteen total permits. That includes a hundred and twelve placement permits, two hundred and forty-two electrical, seventy-nine covert, seventy-three development, six industrial, and two subdivision permits.
Thank you Amanda. Are there any questions?
Uh, I'd like to ask the, uh, auditor, Mr. Dootson. The, uh, thank you Judge. The, uh, fees that each Commissioners', uh, precinct does, does that go into the, uh, road and bridge fund or the general?
It goes in the road and bridge. It, it offsets the supplies account. Um, every month she provides us a report and on the report, it will say, uh, precinct had covert expense and then it goes back into y'all's budget.
So it, not, not the general road and bridge fund, but each precinct-
That's correct.
Road and bridge will, okay.
That's correct. Wherever the, like, whatever the precinct, one, two, three, or four, whichever one the covert was installed in, it goes back to that precinct.
Now, all the, all the permit fees that take place in that precinct go into the road and bridge are just covered?
Just covers.
Just covers.
Thank you for the report.
It's nice.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Item number nineteen, Amanda Young, discussion impossible action, acceptance and approval of preliminary plat- for Tranquility Forest State Subdivision and extension of Palace Drive located in Precinct One. Commissioner Cooper.
Amanda, you want me to take on that one? This particular, uh, plat, uh, is in my precinct, and Mr. Baxley is the developer. Um, and there has been, uh, question, the way the reading is on here, is it says, uh, approval of preliminary plat. And I believe we have a letter from Fitz and Shifman, who is, uh, our engineers, saying that they have recommended, uh, a couple of, uh, changes. Mr. Baxley has, uh, made those changes, and now has brought in a plat that says final plat. What I would suggest to the court and to Mr. Baxley, I had a brief moment to speak with him, and then I had an occurrence after that, uh, that I haven't, um, involved him in, but, uh, I would suggest that we either approve the preliminary plat today, or table this until I can review those plats, and then go from there for the final. Uh, you were, you were requesting that we go ahead and approve the final today. Is that correct?
No, I think there was a s- a step skipped along the way, because it's been a few years in between whenever I've done this.
All right.
So, after talking to Amanda, I think, you know, probably to not approve the final, and to go back and do just the preliminary.
Okay, then that's what, that's what I would suggest that this court do, is approve the preliminary, and then I, I can get the plats and view them, and we can go from there.
Second.
How's that?
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, and a second by Commissioner Pelt to approve the preliminary plat. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Amanda. And Mr. Baxley, thank you as well. Item number twenty, Debbie Mendes Sable, Human Resource Director. Appoint committee to review and evaluate risk management and law enforcement projects submitted pursuant to the TAC Risk Management Pool Risk Control Reimbursement Program. Was it at the last court that, uh, we, or maybe two, two meetings ago, we learned about this program?
Yes.
And so, I believe the Commissioners probably recall that we have this, uh, program where, uh, Commissioners or any other elected official or, or department head can submit a project as part of this, and this is a grant that we received from TAC. And we need to appoint a committee to evaluate those, and I have a recommendation here. Uh, Commissioner Pelt to chair the committee, and then to serve would also be Debbie Mendes Sable, Misty Whitney, Tom Hughes, and Deputy Richard Nelson. And we've spoken to each of those members, and they've all agreed to serve. So, if the Commissioners Court will approve that.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, and a second by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one, Debbie Mendes Sable. Permission for county judge to sign the Affordable Care Act Reporting Tracking System, also known as ARTS, Program Agreement offeri- offered by Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Pool, also known as TAC, H-E-B-P.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl, and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Debbie. Item number twenty-two, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent. Permission to solicit bids for construction services related to community, community development block grant disaster recovery program for Sour Lake Detention Pond, DRS number zero one zero 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 two.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl, and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Misty Whitney. Results in awarding of bids for overlaying approximately four tenths of a mile on Lee Miller Road, and one point nine miles on Neeland Road located in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need the results read first? Misty, if you'll provide the results, please. Thank you.
It's written on May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at two p.m. That was Pat Mitchell and Keith Gunn from L.D. Construction. And we had one from C and M. It was a dollar twenty a square yard. L.D. Construction was a dollar fourteen a square yard, and C.C.C. Black Talking was six dollars a square yard.
Who was the dollar fourteen? Misty?
L.D.
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 So, is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Pelt, that we go with the low bid of L.D. Construction, and a second by Commissioner, was it Kirk and Dahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirk and Dahl. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-four, Misty Whitney. Permission to appoint a committee to evaluate the proposals submitted for IT networking of the courthouse and voice-over internet protocol, otherwise known as VoIP phone system. Have a recommendation on this committee of Commissioner Kirk and Dahl to be the chair, and also for Monica Kelly and Aaron Tupper to serve on that committee. And I have spoken to all three, and they've all three agreed to.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper made the motion, and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-five, Commissioner Chris Kirk and Dahl, Precinct Two. Acceptance of Harden County Emergency Services District Number Eight. Compiled financial statements for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. Commissioner?
Yeah, Judge, I'm looking over it now. Uh, I saw it this morning.
Angela, have you had a chance to review it?
I have had a chance to review it, and I recommend that we, we, uh, I have had a chance to review, and I recommend that we approve the report.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl, and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-six, Commissioner Alvin Roberts, Precinct Four. Acceptance of Harden County Emergency Services District Number Two. Audited financial statements for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Commissioner? Second.
I, I say, I have reviewed this one as well, and recommend we approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-seven, authorization for county judge to sign agreement with Nutri- Nutrition and Services for seniors to utilize space at West Harden Senior Center in Batson for the purpose of serving meals to senior citizens.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt, and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number twenty-eight, item, uh, setting of two public hearings to discuss the issuance of certificates of obligation to fund the courthouse annex building project, and authorization to publish notice of hearing dates, times, and locations in the Salisbury Bee, Beaumont Enterprise, and the Vindicator. And I would also like to add that, uh, we publish those dates in the Lumberton Ledger. I have some tentative dates chosen, uh, if the court will agree, uh, June the fifteenth. Would like to have, uh, a morning meeting on the fifteenth, that is a, uh, Wednesday. But we could have it any time that day, but, uh, either a nine or ten o'clock meeting on the fifteenth, if that's agreeable. All right, so six fifteen.
Is that gonna be here, or?
Yes, sir, here at the courthouse.
What time?
Um, nine a.m. And then either the sixteenth or twentieth, and I, I had, uh, been asked by a couple of people to maybe consider an evening meeting, and either here at the courthouse, or possibly even in, uh, Salisbury or another location. It's easier to have it here at the courthouse, but, uh, it's whatever the pleasure of the court.
I'd like to see us do it a week apart, if we're good, till the twentieth, if that's agreeable.
Sounds good.
What date you set on?
On a Monday.
Okay.
You, you, uh, the twentieth or the sixteenth, you said a week apart?
Well, the first one's on the fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm so different.
Nine a.m., we're gonna do an evening meeting.
What would, what's the pleasure of the court?
I can do an evening.
Can do a six p.m. meeting?
Yeah, that'd give people.
Does that sound good to everyone else?
You just do it here?
We'll do it here. Unless y'all have a?
I think here's best, like.
Okay, so six twenty at six p.m.? Anybody have any input? All right, so we have June the fifteenth at nine a.m. here at the courthouse, and June the twentieth at six p.m., also here at the courthouse. And, uh, if we have more people show up than we have room for in the Commissioners' courtroom, we'll move to the county courtroom. We'll adjourn. Do we need a motion on the public hearing?
Yeah, so moved on the public hearing.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl, and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we have a motion by Commissioner Pelt to adjourn, and a second by Commissioner Kirk and Dahl. We're adjourned.
Adjourn.
Yeah, sorry, my voice gets. So many going.
Come out.